Your phone and your computer. And you want to have hers. So if there's ever any question, you can check text messages. You can take phone calls. You can take the history of the church on the Internet. And accountability begins there. It's good to have somebody else too outside, but it's very, very important that there's accountability between husband and wife. Brother Bear, I know you've got time to begin to break much, but come on and share with us.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bell. Dr. Bell, it's really quite bold of you to even allow these kinds of sessions. Because this is not typical, as you know. And there are those who would say, wow, you're actually talking about these things? Yes, because they're real to ministry. Next little bit here we'll talk, and I know we went over some there, we talked about conflict. And this is a major issue. And by the way, I should tell you right up front, I should say it. Layla, you can share the scripture in a moment. But the Bible is filled from Genesis to Revelation of conflict. And if you think you can pastor without conflict, you know, you really, really just need to rethink. Conflict is endemic. The only way that you can really not have conflict in a church that's really surface level is if you become pastel and you absolutely decide that what you have is all the first one will be, and you're just going to flatten it out, and nothing is going to really matter. And dumb it down, and you might, you might say, oh, everybody, everybody in our church gets along. Everybody gets along. By the way, in church growth, 200 is your barrier. That's the worst barrier. 200 people. Up to 200, your family. Everybody, you kind of do one thing at a time. But after 200, you build in conflict because you start having a diversity of things. You have different activities at the same time. You have people don't know each other. They, I don't know them. And they may never know them, because the church is now grouping off and doing different things. So that 200 barrier, the research is, that's the most difficult barrier to break. So you should know that. Now, whatever size your church is, I encourage you, this is my encouragement, stop talking COVID, Paul Christ. Talk the power of God. Stop it. Don't mention it. And if you're going to say in church, somebody is sick, don't say they got COVID. Because they say this could be with us now until Jesus comes. And, and let's, let's don't do that. Let's don't nurture the wrong. Okay? Some of the great epidemiologists of the world are saying, stop talking about it and live with it. Our problem, our purpose is not to promote fear. But to communicate to people the hope of heaven. All right? So conflict is endemic in, in pastors. It's always there. It's what you do with it. Now, here's what you want to do. You know, in times past, when, in ancient times, when they would do battle, it was, it was scorched earth policy. I mean, the army moved, and it took out everything in its past that were past that was the enemy. But with modern times, we now do strategic warfare. So like you know, we'll study, study, study. We had people in our congregation at Covenant Church, that they were, I'm confident, they would tell me, they said, if I told you what I'd do, I'd have to kill you, Pastor Bear. But I know, I know that there are people who sit in. We have INJIC, the Army, CIA, the Army, CIA, whatever. We have CIA and DIA, all in Charlottesville. All those are the highest levels in Charlottesville. Those all three have huge centers in Charlottesville. And there are people in Charlottesville who go to work and they sit all day with joysticks. And they can launch a missile in any part of the world, and they can guide it, sitting in Charlottesville, Virginia. And then they can make your button want to drop a missile, and where to drop it, and guide it. And they base it, they finally drop the missile, base it down, doing the maximum damage with the minimum collateral damage. Got that? Minimum collateral damage. So when you face conflict in your ministry or in your personal life, or whatever else, what you want to do is, how do I minimize collateral damage? How do I keep this? Now, some of that is done by anticipating. If you're praying and studying and looking at your people in ministry, you should smell a problem most of the time before it gets to you. Now what you start doing is saying, how do I minimize collateral damage? So when you're talking about conflict, you're not talking about, man, we got into a knockdown, drag out, and what happened? We're all sick people, you know, and us, and so many left the church, and thus, thus, thus. You should have been working there a long time before. And nobody left the church. There were some hurt feelings, but we all met and we apologized and repent. So you didn't lose anybody. I'm okay, y'all understand what I'm saying? Layla, you're going to say something.
But that doesn't mean it always works out that way. And sometimes we found that those people that left the church, left another door for you to succeed. That their being gone actually blessed the church. Now, you pray for them, and you pray they get in a good church, and that... A lot of the people you lose from a church, it's because they want to tell how to run things. And if they can have a strong pastor, they're not going to be able to do that. And so just, you think, am I doing the right things? And am I doing the right things for the right reasons?
Let me interrupt you. Somebody just came to you, and they said, I want to tell you something. And can you get a message through to Pastor Bear?
Oh, my goodness. I made up my mind when we started pastoring, that I would not be the channel to the pastor. If anybody wanted to get a message to him, I'd say, well, if he is, go tell him. And I would never let anybody tell me something to tell him. Or if they did, I wouldn't tell him. Because I just, that, that was, that was not my role. It's not my role to do that. Is that what you want me to say? Is that what you were indicating?
Yeah. It's important that you, if you're the spouse, don't be the carrier.
Now, if you pick up something on your own, which women do a lot of times, you know, sometimes...
Not the carrier of gossip.
No, 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 no. If you pick, if you see a problem brewing, then you need to talk to your husband about that. Definitely. You don't want him to slip out there. Sometimes men, you know, men are wonderful, but sometimes things go zoom.
That's a double amen.
Pardon?
That's a double amen.
Double amen, I got there. But, but we women are picking up on it, and we can see it. And I really think it's my, my role. My role is to make him all he can be. That's, that's what I live in life. And what I can do to support him, actually, when I finished my doctorate, I did not go to work in a secular job. Because a secular job, at that level of education, would have required probably travel, and many hours and stuff, and I couldn't be available to go with him as I'm doing now. And I couldn't be available to work in the churches I wanted to. So because of that, I was able to just be there and among the people, and pick up some times on things that were, like I said, brewing. That may not be a good term to use in a church gathering, but anyway. So that's my reflection on life. I did not want to have a career that was going to take me away from him and our ministry. But, okay, now let me tell you this. Charlottesville, Virginia is, intellectualism is almost a god there. We don't think every pastor in life has to go to earn a doctorate to be successful. But in that town, we almost had to. Because we could look at people and say, hey, wait a minute. I've got the same degree you have, from the same university, and I believe this word is true, and I lived this word, and I want you to come visit me in church. So in our town, it was almost a necessity. And I was glad I got it, even though I never got to pay for it.
Let's approach that with a different perspective. I actually read something recently posted by a Church of God minister who was justifying that he did not have more education. And I was appalled that he would actually post that kind of article. Now, there are those probably right here today, that if I talk to you, I might judge you to be a graduate of some, some good college. But you would tell me that you only have a junior high degree. Why would you tell that? Why? You see, what you must understand is that you have a right to stand in your own integrity. But what you don't ever want to do is justify a lower level. Now, I would, from the pulpit, I would say to our people, I would say, you think I talk about education? Yes, I do. Let me explain to you why. Education will not save your soul. But neither will its. But education can improve your lifestyle, and you can tithe more. Anybody got a problem with that? Because what we know, and I can tell you the numbers, I can actually tell you the numbers. Somebody drops out of high school, this is what they will make in their whole lifetime. Somebody graduates from high school, they will make this much in their lifetime on average in America. Somebody graduates from college, they'll make this much in their lifetime in college. And by the way, if you graduate with four year degrees in college, you in America will make about $800,000 more than somebody who graduated from high school. If you graduate, if you do a graduate degree, it increments based upon the profession. So your level of education is directly tied statistically to your income in life. Why would you want your people to make as much as they can? I would, I'm talking, how do you, how do you, how do you get rid of conflict? How do you deal with conflict? You get your people on a path that they want to go somewhere. You've got goals ahead of them. So from our children, kindergarten up, over 39 years, I nurtured our congregation. When Layla and I went to Covenant, we did not have but one person in the congregation before we arrived who had a degree in the church that was 28 years old, and that was the former pastor. And he'd been there 23 of those 28 years. He'd come three different times, back two times to rescue him. And he's the only one who had a bachelor's degree. Bachelor. When we left Covenant 39 years later, we had our doctors, and we had scientists, doctors, lawyers, engineers, architects, schoolteachers, professors, and people left Covenant that are now Church of God leaders in the world. From Covenant Church. And every year for the last few years, last several years we were there, our children, our high school graduates got early admission to some of the most elite colleges and universities in America. Because I would tell them, I would sit them down before they brought schools, and this is how you make an A. You know, I can tell you where to sit in class to make, have the best chance of making an A? You know why? Because Greeks figured it out 2,500 years ago. There are things you can learn. And what you want to do is, what you want to do for Jesus is be the best you can be. That's what you want to do. You want to be the best you can be. Now, if you don't want to go back to talk, then read lots of books, and meet with some people, and don't talk ballgames all the time. I honestly feel some Church of God pastors know more about football teams and basketball teams than they do about scripture. Because I don't hear them talk about scripture. I hear them giving off statistics and this, that, and the other. And I'm not adverse to that. I'm from Tony Bennett territory. Okay, and the Chaplain of FCA, remember Covenant Church? And we got free tickets to go to games. And it could get more if we wanted. But, but once in a while, I'll go. I'm a pastor. That's not my world. That's, that's secondary. That's, that's something we might do. You know, the bank actually gave us tickets to sit in the wing. Yeah, I mean, okay, so, but don't get heady. What we want to do is, am I being the best I can be for Jesus? And am I sharpening myself? Am I improving my skills? Look, here I am, gray headed, but I still need to sharpen my mind. One, because I read that if I do that, I can push dementia away. I don't want to get old until I have to. Are y'all with me this morning? I wonder if you're with me? I want to push dementia away. How can I do that? Layla? Well, Layla, I play card games. God have mercy, they would have turned us out of church when I was a kid. And I'll tell you personally, when Layla loses, she gets a bad attitude.
Okay.
That ain't true. I hope Jesus doesn't come right now. I'm more than just a bad attitude. I have been known to throw my cards. Layla, go ahead.
Bottom line, you're the parents of your church, and your church will become what you are. They'll become like you. If a church is a family, you're the mom and pop. And just, you know, our having those degrees, that was a silent encouragement to our children and to those growing up. I had a, one of my best Bible quizzes ever is now a circuit court judge. Grew up in Covenant Church. Able to do so much good because he works with the juvenile and domestic relations. And, you know, but...
Youngest circuit court, youngest domestic court judge ever appointed in Virginia. And Filipino picked up at the airport in 1991. Twelve years of age.
So, you know, and we've had people do, go far beyond us in, in the world in success. But it was because they were raised in a church that believed in not only loving the Lord and learning the Word, but also doing something, reaching for a goal. You know, one of the saddest things I ever see, when they were interviewing people who have lost their homes because of a flood, or a tornado, or what? They say, we don't have any dreams left. And when people don't have dreams, it is a sad situation. We try to sow dreams into them. Do that for your church. Sow dreams into their heart. Tell them they can do it, and they can go out and be a success.
We had people in their 50s go back and get their doctorate. And then go on to be professionals in universities and stuff. Dream! By the way, I want to go back, and if you'll allow me, just to kind of drop back in a moment. Remember when we were talking about finances, we were talking about good debt and bad debt? You should always remember that. And someone came up and said, well, I'm into, I'm into Dave Ramsey. Me too, we totally agree with him. Dave Ramsey says, no debt? Let me tell you something that you should know. If you have no debt, your credit score goes down.
Amen. You're low.
Down. Did you know that? No debt, and your credit score goes down. That means if you go to the bank to borrow, you pay a higher interest rate than people who have some debt. Uh huh. So here, I want to hear again. There's good debt and bad debt. Don't ever risk your savings and all against the rice on your table. You make sure that there's a protective area of your life, and if you're going to do something, it's over here. So, you know, we, we do things, and we have done things, and I've borrowed money to do things. But I'm going to always be sure that I can provide for my family over here. And that's why you need a financial, financial counselor. Because you don't see it yourself. You don't see your potential, or you don't see your liabilities like other people see it. And, and we just drag this over into the conflict area. We get into conflict in ministry lots of times, because we get nervous, we get upset, we don't know how we're going to make it. We're not at peace with ourselves, and then the church is, is pushing us, and we, we don't know how we're going to pay our bills, and we don't know, you know, how we're going to do this, that, and the other. And it's because we're not settled issues in our own life, that we're on a tension, a high tension wire over here. Boom, 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 boom. And then somebody hits it, and we go, boom, you know? And no, 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 no. We're, we're trying to work out, how do we handle conflict in a godly way? How do we train our people? Now, don't think about sermons. In case y'all think, oh, this is psychology and sociology, and I see you later, you want to talk, in just one moment. But don't, don't, don't think we're doing that. No, no, no. The pulpit is the right place for godly instruction. It's the right place. You share things from the pulpit in service, but don't ever try and correct somebody from the pulpit. Never. Ever. Don't ever put into something, well, this is to take care of that, that personal gift. Never. God help us, never, never, never. That'd be so wrong. And, you know, everybody agree? You agree? No, no, no. You deal with that outside the pulpit. But from the pulpit, you can instruct people about their lives and their future, and point out things. And Layla, come on, help me here a minute. You want to say something?
Well, one thing we practiced was the Matthew 18:15 principle of solving conflict.
Thank you so much.
That is, if you have a problem, go to the brother who have a problem with it. And so many people want to talk to you about that person or whatever. And we've actually had people say, a friend of mine talking, well, you know, just have a problem with that brother. Well, have you gone to Pastor Bear? No, because I know what he would do. He'd tell me to go to the person. Well, that's the way it should be. So, so don't try to solve conflicts if the people haven't followed the right path to get to you.
Oh, thank you. Layla, I really appreciate that. And it takes me back. We've not been in Covenant very long, when one of the lead elements came to me and said, Pastor, I need to let you know that I saw the youth leader smoking a cigar out on his Pepsi bottle. And he said, I feel like you need to talk to him. Really? Me? You want me to talk to you? Well, he said, you're the pastor. I said, but I didn't see him. I said, I don't think I can get, well, you're the pastor. I said, no, 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 no. You saw him. He said, what do you say? Well, I said, I'm suggesting this. He's a young man, he's single. And I said, if he did that, I don't know if he did or didn't, but you say you think he did, and you tell me, but I can't test. You know what? I can't go to court and sit in the witness stand, and I've been there many, many times, and I can't sit there and say, well, you know, Dr. Cobble told me that he saw. And the judge said, you will please be instructed that you cannot quote somebody else. If you didn't see it, you didn't see it. Amen? You can't. So I said, he said, what do you suggest? I said, well, I suggest that you have your wife cook a nice cake or pie, and that you invite this brother over for some ice cream and cake or pie, and that you fellowship together in the distinction to him, that you feel like you saw him smoking a cigar the other day. I never heard about it again, and they became fast friends, and both of them did a great job for the Lord. I'm not going to fight your battle for you. I'm not. In one moment, I will come to you. I'm going to remind you again. If God wakes you up tonight at 3 o'clock, did I tell you all this? If he wakes me up at 3 o'clock to pray for you, you better pray, I'll wait till 6:00 to call you. Because I ain't going to be praying for you and you not know I'm praying for you. I think you need to know, if God would cheat my sleep, or you, you need to be losing some sleep too. Yes, ma'am?
I was just thinking that conflict comes a lot of ways, because the Bible says we're supposed to love and not have offense. I mean, it says, even in the Lord's prayer, if you have anything against anybody, you're supposed to get it out immediately. And somewhere along the line, everybody thinks that we're the judge of everybody else, and the only person you're responsible for is yourself. I'm not responsible for you, you, or anybody else in here, so we need to...
We're accountable to others, but we're responsible for ourselves.
For us only. We can pray for that brother, but it's not ours to go around and telling, I saw this, I saw this, I saw this, and I did that. If we take care of us, we wouldn't have any other time to do anything else.
You've heard us talk a lot about the second church we pastored. We were there 39 years, as we said. All those six years of the first church, I don't think we had as much success in the first church as we did. Only God knows, though. But thinking back to it, we were young, we were starting out, and we would be riding down the street and see somebody we'd been working with smoking a cigarette. And that would be personal to us. We had failed because Johnny's on the street smoking a cigarette. And it's like everything was a dagger, and we were taking it all personally, and not realizing that only Johnny is responsible for Johnny. We can do what we can do, but if he's going to keep smoking cigarettes, as my husband calls them, you know, that's not...
North Carolina, Layla, don't be throwing off.
Say it. I want them to hear you say it.
I ain't saying.
Anyway, cigarette, that's what it is. But we, and you have to learn not to take those things personally. You know, you've done your part, they're responsible for themselves. Thank you for saying that.
Now, we're kind of weaving all this in here together, and you see, we're talking about, come up on this wounded hearts and, been hurt? Okay, I will tell you. While I was recovering from pancreatic cancer, my executive pastor deceitfully peeled off 100 people and $100,000 or more of our budget, in the midst of me taking chemo.
And started a church between our church and our home, where he located his.
So what are you going to do? Don't take it to the pulpit. Nobody ever heard me talk about this from the pulpit? Nope. I said, I'm going to pastor the people God's left us, and I'm going to be faithful, and we're going to press ahead. And we never missed a paper. We kept going. And God doing the work. Just a couple, three weeks ago, a couple months ago, one of the men, one of the pastors, four of them named bishops, turned in their license to a independent.
With him?
With him. And just a few weeks ago, one of them called me and said, I did wrong. And said, I'd like to come back into Church of God. I said, well, let me talk to Layla. And I mentioned it to Layla. You know what Layla said? Tell him, Layla.
Well, you're still on the phone with him, and I could tell, y'all were trying to set up a meeting. I said, invite him for dinner. Invite him and his wife for dinner.
I called Bishop Murkovich in Virginia, our administrative bishop, and he said, are you out of your mind? He said, I have never heard of any such thing in my life. After what he did, you would have him to your house for dinner? I was, what, what's the deal? So we fed him a nice meal, listened, and he'll be leaving shortly, as I understand it, to go to Chicago to pastor the Church of God.
I'm not all that great. I'm not sure I could do it for the, for the guy that originated all of it. I would have to do work in me to come to that point for them.
Hurt? It's not your church. Who said that? The preacher last night? It's not your church. And one day, you will leave, and somebody else will be the pastor. Don't own it. You're a fiduciary. You're just temporary. And one day, you're going to move on. Don't take everything like it's stealing your identity. You're still a person. When we pastored with Bill, that first church, it was desperate times. February came, and we had two children, school bills, and my paycheck one week was $6.37 with snow on the ground, as I recall. Now, you know what? Now, you know what? I went downtown and I bought an eight-inch Chinese hog hair brush that had been laying there, they said, for over fifteen years. But I was a commercial painter. And I went out in the country and I found a roof, and on a sunny day, I put a ladder up and I went up on a metal roof and put a rope around a chimney and tied it around my waist like a crazy man. I could have died dangling outside the house. And held onto that rope and a bucket with one end and used an eight-inch brush. And I came off of that roof in record time until a woman didn't even want to pay me. She said, you ain't been up there long enough. I said, check the roof, if anything being done otherwise, otherwise I want my hundred and ten dollars. Now, listen. I still have my Chinese hog hair brush, and if I need to, I can make a living with it. I still get out, I used to be as good a trim painter. This is funny, in days when I was at college, we remember, I went out one day in clothes like this somewhat. And I walked up on a construction site, big construction site, y'all need trim painters? Yes, I said, I'd like to apply. They said, duh, 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 you know? And I said, you have a two-and-a-half-inch angle bristle brush? Yes, I said, gonna paint that window? Yes. And I walked over it in dress clothes. Chum, 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 I could do sixteen things along your window in twelve minutes flat, and you didn't have to wipe any glass. I can still paint. But I also know how to hire a crew, and I can still make a living and not preach. Therefore, I will not let the devil threaten me.
Hallelujah.
I will not. And by the way, until I left covenant, I always dabbled a little bit on the side. I buy a little piece of land and sell it, or do something. And it's legal, it's okay, because I could tithe more to God. Now, if you have skills and talents, don't drop them. And you should always be prepared to put bread on your table some other way than with a check from the church. Leila? What are you gonna say?
I didn't go along with that, I was just noting something down, I didn't want to forget, so, anyway.
You remember what you're not gonna forget?
I remember what's here, but just a thing to do for what you're saying.
Let's find change something.
This Christian psychiatrist he told you about was one of the first supporters of this ministry that we're now on. We have a Bible one...
He had never tithed in his life.
And he started sending his tithes to us. Now, we don't recommend that, we recommend tithing to your church, but he wasn't tithing anyway. Now, he has graduated to where he's tithing to his church, and we thank God for that. But, you know, he saw the importance of a ministry ministering to pastors in the lives. So even on that term, you know, that's kind of a, it's a motivator for us. Also, people tell us, they say, you mean you're traveling and all this COVID and everything? You're staying in motels, you're eating in restaurants, you know, acting like we're not very wise? Well, God has called you to do it, just go do it. And we also, we have twenty-three people in our family. Seventeen of them have had COVID to different extents, most very mild. We're two of the seven, of the, whatever, that have not. Sixteen of them have had it, we're two of the seven that have not. So God knows what he's doing, plus we talked about it, and we decided we would rather die living than live dying.
If you're gonna be a minister, you will get wounded. Now, this is something that I came by my own head. I said, if you're gonna be a minister, you need to go down to the drugstore and you need to buy you a big ball of cotton. Because somewhere along the line, you're gonna get shot. And if you're gonna wait for somebody else to come be the medic, you might die before they get there. So you gotta be able to have your own cotton with you and stuff the bullet hole and get up and keep going. In the gifts, God-given gifts, Romans twelve, I'm an exhorter, she's a perceiver. And that's two different worlds, okay? It's two different worlds. And we bring them together. For me, Leila, what's the worst thing about me? What really bothers you as much as anything?
You being an exhorter?
When I'm down.
Oh, okay. He talks all the time, but when he gets quiet, that really bothers me, because I know he's really bothered. And I can't get him out of it when he gets quiet. But the good thing about exhorters, they don't stay down long. Within a day or two, he's up, I hear him in the bathroom whistling while he's shaving or whatever, and I think, okay, he's decided he's coming out of it today.
So if day three passes, and I'm, I'm not cooperative, I say, you better have come to Jesus meeting. Day three's long enough. Day one, I wallow in my self pity. Day two, I kind of work it out and get past my embarrassment and all that kind of thing. Day three, it's time to take a shower, put on your clothes, get out the door, and go kick the devil in the teeth. I mean that, and that's the life I live. That's the way I'm practicing. Yes, somebody got a hand up out here, yes?
Is it the mentality of the wounded healer, the preacher, the wounded healer? I've heard that quite often in more familiar, in more academic circles lately, that the idea of the pastor that gets wounded over and over and over again, but still has to heal those that are broken in his congregation, but he has to take time to heal himself?
The wounded healer, so they, yes.
Has to be healed.
But I'm gonna come back, same thing, how are you gonna heal? One, you need to reconcile it with the Lord. Did you do wrong? If you did, you need to settle with the Lord. Did you offend someone? You need to apologize. That's not easy, is it? I'm sorry. Oh, by the way, you gotta hear this, I figured this out. It is the easiest thing in the world to forgive other people. It's so easy! You know what? What am I forgiving you for? I'm forgiving you because you did wrong. Think about it. I forgive you because you were right. Huh? No, when I say I forgive you, it's because you did wrong.
You're actually saying you were wrong.
Why is it so hard for me to say I forgive you? Think about it.
If they're right, there's nothing to forgive.
Huh? Can we come along? Come on, yeah? Yeah, forgive people, move on! And, you know, someone came up to me with a, Pastor, I am so mad at you, I'm so upset at you, I've been mad at you for two years. I said, uh, well, um, help me. Why? Why? Well, two years ago, you did this, and so did us. I said, oh, man. I said, you know what's really regrettable about this? What I feel so terrible about? You've been, you've been laying awake and fretting over this for two years, and I've been sleeping good. I had no clue. You say I did that? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me. What? You're gonna carry? And the other person doesn't even know? That you're offended at him? Isn't that kind of silly? And the Bible says, go to them. Go to. Somebody come, people saying, Pastor, no, 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 I'm not gonna do your dirty work for you. I'm not gonna do your dirty work. You got a problem with a brother, you talk to him. Leila?
Okay, any church has conflict. And really, when you think about it, if people are not going to have conflict, if people are gonna do what's right all the time, they don't need a pastor. Right? So because of that, that's why we are pastors. There are five things that we always backed up, we would go home and talk about it when, when we would think about leaving. And there were a few times in those thirty-nine years we thought about leaving, mostly because of conflict. We'd come home and we'd say, number one, are these people right? Is what they're saying about us right? Or what they're saying, doing? And if so, we'd have to pray about it, straighten it out. I don't remember that happening, but we felt we were right. But then, are we doing the right things? Are we doing the right things for the right reasons? In other words, the little boy that the teacher told him to sit down, and he kept standing, and she said, sit down, and standing. And finally, he sat down, he says, but in my mind, I'm still standing up, you know? Sometimes we could do right because of things like that, but no. We do right for the right reasons. Four, has God told, did God send us here? Yes. Five, has God told us to leave? And every time, for thirty-nine years, God had not told us to leave. But when he did, my husband came in one day and he says, God said it's time. And I knew it, God said, sooner or later. All those things I had dreaded about leaving, I mean, I thought about it so many times during the years. My heart is gonna be ripped out of me when we leave here, and we leave these people, and we leave all, you know? Because we love them so much. But when God said it, it is easy to be on the road now, loving you and meeting you, and remembering them and knowing they're being taken care of, and having wonderful memories, but my heart's not ripped out for being gone.
Leila, you remind me this morning, the doctors have now come up with a new diagnosis, and it is the wounded heart. The wounded heart, or the broken heart syndrome. It's actually now a medical term, and it's where you can grieve over a loss or a situation. And now they're actually dragging it into this pandemic. They're saying that it is causing an increase of people dying from the wounded or the broken heart syndrome. They just are wearing it heavy, 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 until their body kind of crashes, okay? Okay? And so it's actually a new medical term. And so what you want to do is keep in mind and say, I'm not going there, I'm not going to live that life. So proper exercise, and I haven't said it yet, but I'm gonna hasten and say it. You need to take care of your body, you need to watch what you eat, you need to try and watch your weight, you need to try and exercise enough, you know, until your body is agile, and pay attention. Pay attention to those things. Let me, let me, um, I had a note here. I am not, I am not exaggerating when I tell you that in thirty-nine years of being pastor covenant church, I never had a bad elders meeting. Never one time did we ever in on the side of it. Not one time. And there are reasons for that. One, I never handled finances. I knew about finances, but I would have the chairman of the finance committee make the report to the elders. And I'm telling you the God's truth when I tell you, I pulled up a bowl of grapes, usually I love grapes. I mean, I would never came and I'd over there for the grapes, you know? I would just eat grapes while they did the financial report. Until one day I realized I'm a stewardess, and I had to kind of calm down a little bit. But I would let the financial, and somebody said, well, Pastor, what about thus and so? And I said, I don't know. I said, we'll check with you and get back to you and make the report next week. I am not gonna be on a hot start of the elders meeting, finances. I am not. I never wa, and I recommend you don't be. Don't own the finances, but you own responsibility, you own knowing. You make sure you meet with the clerk regularly, you make sure that you know exactly what's happening, and don't... I hope, anybody here, clerk? Anybody here, clerk? Clerk? I'm gonna say it. It's dangerous stuff when you tell me clerk takes care of everything. Don't do that. Clerk? If you're clerk, you're here, you make sure that the pastor's the leader. You let the pastor be leader. The pastor's the leader, it's his mission, he's the one that's counting. He's the one that I wish to come after, if he's coming after anybody, not clerk. Am I right, Bishop? That's right. So you understand that, you make sure you know what understands. But I let them make the report, and I step back. But here's the other thing, I'm gonna be honest with you about this now, here's what happened. One day, a family got contentious, but every church they go to, they're contentious. They came, they blessed for a while, and then they become a curse and all. I'm gonna drop back to camp in just a moment. Any person who ever left covenant church, if possible, I looked at them and I grieved. I did. I've actually been admonished, let it go, Pastor, let them go, let them go. But I would grieve, and I would meet people at the door when they were leaving sometimes and say to them, I'm so sorry you're leaving, and I want you to know these doors are open for when you return. Because I would say to myself, I love them more than their next pastor's gonna love them. They need a pastor, and they wouldn't let me be their pastor. If they come back, maybe they'll let me be their pastor. So I never saw, people say, I was glad they were gone. I never saw anyone go out, though I was glad they were gone. Now, I can't answer for Leila, okay? But I can tell you, I never, ever, in fact, I went and visited one person one time that was contentless and difficult, and came back home, and Leila was hoping that I had kicked the can down the road, and I said, no, we made peace, they're coming back. She said, oh, for, you know? And so, and it didn't go like she wanted it to go. But, but I want you to...
But I'm a perceiver, and he still left again.
Yeah, they still left potentially, but once that elder stood up, he said, well, I've got something to say before we start the meeting. And he said, uh... Well, my wife and I are unhappy and said, we're gonna leave. And he made his little speech, and he got up one round table and hugged and shook hands with everybody but me, and he went out the door.
Put his keys on the table.
Pardon? Oh, put his keys, put church on table. And he went out the door, and I sat there in the silence, and I said, well, anybody else got anything to say? It totally surprised me, I had no clue, he hadn't talked to me beforehand or anything. And a moment of silence, somebody said, looks to me like we got a heavy agenda, we better get back to the work with the worship board. It was over. Move on. I'm in, it's okay, I still got my paintbrush, right? Hello? Hello? Really? Really? And you know, one of the easier things we do as pastors, we go sell carnage. But we talk, we like people, we know people, right?
Early on at that church, there was a meeting that you felt was going to be contentious, and you told me to come and serve communion.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I had sensed that there was something going on, and I didn't really know what was going to happen. Oh, no, I didn't know, I didn't know. The back of the first sanctuary we built, the entire back wall was a bronze mirror, the entire back wall, okay? That was the purpose, that was the plan, to put mirrors on the wall. And, and so what was happening is, I didn't know that, I didn't know the depth of the issue, and I asked Leila, so bring communion to the elders meeting, and she was late, and she came and knocked on the door.
Right at the time that y'all were ready, yeah, to discuss that.
And she, they carried it in, whoever carried it in, put it in the middle of our elders' table. And I said, when we're through today, we're going to take communion together as brothers, as all men then. And it was like... And then, when it came up, they thought I was gonna go down to roses and buy the little one-foot square little mirror things and stick them all over the back of the church. I'd been upset too, wouldn't you? And it was kind of funny, because, no, 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 we put beautiful, I had a friend who owned a mirror place, and he sold it to us at a bargain, and it was magnificent. It doubled the congregation on Sunday.
Instantly.
It was a good, it doubled. All right, Leila?
Wondering, somebody keep us on track, how much more time do we have?
We got a closing in about three or four minutes, don't we, Bishop? Three or four?
Do any of you have questions, thoughts, things we've said that sparked something?
Speak.
Dr. Bear, I think sometimes when we look at conflict, we, we only see the danger perspective, but not the opportunity.
Oh, that's good.
You know, that's what the Chinese word for conflict has, that the symbol of danger and opportunity. And one of the things that helped me to see that was, is that investment in myself. Talking, when you were talking about education, I got to take some great classes on conflict, been able to read some wonderful books concerning conflict. I am nowhere near, God's still working on me, how to deal with it. But it helped me to be my own sounding board in, in seeing how to handle conflict, not only on the outside, but conflict within. And I think sometimes as pastors and ministers, we get so overwhelmed, and we can only look at conflict from a sense of danger, but we don't look at it as the opportunity and how we need to invest in ourselves and learn how to handle those situations. Because essentially, when you're investing in yourself, you're investing in your people.
Absolutely.
And even having to help them through their own personal conflict. So it's a great correlation there of... So it's, it's a great correlation there of investing in yourself and investing in them, even in what we consider dangerous times can be opportunities.
Thank you so much for that. Let's wrap together your moments. I want, I want to repeat again. You gonna say something else?
Well, I was just gonna say, we can know one man that knows everything about, he has all the books about how a pastor of church successfully and everything, but he has to deal with people and that's his problem. Dealing with people. He can have the knowledge of how to do it, but remember, people are people. And that's because, that's why you've been appointed to be a pastor, to deal with people. So that's the hugest part of being a pastor, not knowing it, but doing it.
Thank you, Layla. Let's wrap it together here now. I want you to hear the prevailing thing that we keep saying. You make sure you've got some other people around you, your spouse. As, as I think the bishop gave you, your spouse should know all your code words and all of your passwords and you should be accountable to your spouse. But you should also have some other people, and not necessarily in the church, okay? I have a broker insurance bill. I'll go sit down in front of him. He's the son of a Baptist minister. And I'll sit down and just say, "Pastor Bear, what do you need today?" I said, "I'm a dummy coming to talk to a genius." "Oh, come on, Pastor." I said, "No, no, no. You know your stuff. Talk to me." I am the same way. I'll go in and see a banker or somebody and I'll say, "Just talk to me and tell me what's going on." I'll throw my finances on the table and I'll say, "Tell me which way I need to go. Tell me." So have somebody... Now, hold on, listen. Some people say, "I've got three close friends." That's dangerous, okay? Second, never, ever emphasize to other people who your close friends are. Because if I say that Brother Joe is one of, if I say Joe Smith is one of my best friends, you know, when I basically told you, "Don't you mess with Joe nor me between us. Are you gonna get shot by both of us." So I've told you, you're out.
It offends my, it offends my ear, you know, when I hear a man say so-and-so is my best friend. And he's not naming his wife because his wife should be his best friend.
That's right. Yes, thank you, Layla. And so I, I would not, I have people that say, that would have taken us out to eat every Sunday, literally, every Sunday, and fed us anything we wanted to eat, money to issue. No, 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 no. One or two Sundays and then it's gonna be weeks off before I'm gonna go with them again. I have people I like to be with and we would actually meet out of town in another city or somewhere else and all because I did not. If I'm gonna go fishing, I'm not gonna come in with my boat in front of church with fishing rods sticking out of it and have it sitting outside the church. Because somebody would think, "That's all I am. I'm just a fisherman." I'm gonna leave my boat down the road somewhere and I'm gonna come to church in my car and then I'm gonna leave and go pick up my boat and go. You don't need to know everything I'm doing as a preacher. I got a right to my private life. But if I, I went in one pastor's office and he had deer trophies all around his wall, antlers and so forth, and I thought, "Dear God, does he ever pray?" No, no, listen to, you understand what I'm saying? Your office is a testimony. And you're hanging carnal things on a wall in your pastor's office or your office at home? And people come in, they know where your heart is. No, 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 no. You want some people around you. So listen, here's my, my modus operandi. I have Layla in my life and then the rest of my life is divided into a big pie with slices. And when I'm with my finance advisor, we're gonna talk about finances and he's not gonna know anything else about the other parts of my life. So my life is a pie in slices. And I turn to Dr. Brown, the forensic psychiatrist, when I wanna talk about psychology issue, okay? And that's what we talk about. I don't talk to him about my finances. I'll talk to him about ministry issues. I'll talk to him about psychology. So top, 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 think about that, all right? But you need, you need to work very hard at building those people around you and your prayer team and your people that hold you accountable to the Word of God, okay? That, that's what I would, would say to you. Remember, God has a profound sense of humor. If he gave to us laughter, and if you'll talk to a psychiatrist and, and he will tell you, he will tell you that laughter actually, smiling actually keeps your face alive and well and that laughter is therapeutic. And, and if God put laughter within us, then God laughs. I, I think God laughed the day that he caused the animals to pass by Adam. Why? What scripture say? Why did God cause the animals to pass by Adam? Help me.
To see what he would call.
To see what he would call them, creativity. And so I see God sitting back, this is my archie cola moon pie time. God's sitting back over here with archie cola moon pie. And he said, "All right, have at it there, Adam." "That's it." "Uh, he, 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 hip, hip, po, 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 pal, uh, must." "What'd you say, Adam?" "Uh, hip, po, pal, must." "Adam, where did you think of that?" "I don't know. It just came to my God's judgment." I mean, God lifted up the man to name the animal. Come on, guys. I think God's got a tremendous sense of humor. Lay back and laugh sometime. Laugh at yourself. I'm gonna finish. Laugh at yourself when one Sunday morning I'm preaching to a congregation of astute people in Charlottesville, Virginia, and I decide I'm gonna drop back to North Carolina to my childhood days. And I said, "Well, I'll, I'll just tell you that back when I was a boy, I used to take my hoe and go out to the garden. Try that one."
So it started over in the teen section and they were like...
Okay, so you have, don't try and cover yourself up. So, okay, folks, I'm just, I'm all woke stuff. Sorry. You know, move on. Preach your sermon, okay?
One thing in finishing up, we have these cards up here if you have questions, if you wants to deal with, either here or later. But also, I've asked and, and they say it's okay. If you would like for us to come and visit with you, to take you out to a meal and encourage your family and your, your church, fill out one of the cards. It may be months before we get around to you because our schedule's kind of full.
We can call too.
But we'll try to work it in. I like going out.
I know we do.
Yeah. But, but anyway, we'll, we'll be glad to entertain that, yeah. Because we don't know anything about people when we go to meetings.
The bishop does not tell us anything about any of the pastors we met with. He is simply, has, says, "Here's somebody you can call." That's it. And he does not ask for any report. And we don't provide any report.
So the cards and pens are up here if you'd like to do that.
So it's a trust factor. You see what I'm talking about, trust? Now, I know that it's, we've taken a while this morning, but I want pregnant to be a blessing to you, that you feel empowered to go do something powerful for Jesus and that you're motivated, get your finances in order, check on your health, check on your family and, and go, go have a date with your spouse and, and write. And come on now and get some people around you to hold you accountable and to push you along to a more powerful future. God bless you and thank you so, so much, Bishop. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brother Sister Bear. Appreciate your vulnerability and sharing your experiences. I love to listen to a man that's been there, done that. I want to say two things to you. Number one, we've got this great facility here. And I've said it before and yesterday, but any pastor in West Oklahina can come here and have a room free. We won't charge. The state offices will pay. You can come here and get away. Coming ahead, using this campground is pretty empty. We've got the lead students here, but it stays empty more than it stays full. It's a great place to retreat, to get away. If you just need a night or two, or if you just call Jennifer, get a schedule. I don't even have to know about it. Let Lisa know about it just so we can, they can build a state office and we'll pay for it. But we want you to have a place where you can get away. You need to get away. And some of you haven't taken a vacation, haven't taken any time, and you need to. It's good for you and good for your family. Second thing I want to say is I don't know who started this rumor. I suspect my wife, but it's not true. I have not made a decision whether I'm gonna retire or not. Some people have already asked me, "Are you retiring at this assembly?" I told somebody I've got three, three conditions. Number one, my health. And then if you know, I have a Nash Liver Disease. Was diagnosed four years ago and I was at F3, F4, cirrhosis of the liver. Two years ago, it got down to F2, F3. And this, this past year, I had another biopsy and it was down to F2. Some of the liver is going to do enough. Number two, I said, "Depends upon you." You had to vote. The vote just closed February the 8th. We have not been told what our vote is, but I had to give two-thirds vote to even have a chance of coming back. And number three, the committee has to be willing to appoint me. So that decision has not been made. I'll let you do it as soon as I know and as soon as Bishop convinces me. And she's willing to do whatever I feel like is God's will. That's what I want, God's will. Okay? Would you stand? Thank you, Brother Bear, Sister Bear. Father, we thank you for your word this morning. Thank you for this good advice, this wisdom that they've shared with us today. And I pray, God, that you help the ministers in West Oklahina to understand that there are people in the church of God to whom they can go and talk to without it being told to anybody else and get help if they need it. And I just pray that our men will take advantage of the bears and God, you use them for your glory to encourage, to bless, and to inspire to greater things for God and the kingdom of God, in Christ's name, amen.